September 1st, 2022 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only, and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. I'll go ahead and perform roll call. Fisher here.
Here.
Marzullo here. Manley there. Spellman here. Engelmann's in the audience. Trustee Augustine is in the audience. Inspector Wilson's in the audience, and I do not see anyone else attending virtually. Perfect. I'd like to begin with the review of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from August 4th, 2022. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? And are there any suggested amendments? No? If there are no suggested amendments, then entertain a motion to approve the August 4th, 2022 minutes.
I did have one thing.
Go ahead.
And this is specific to Cindy. It has her name and address in there, and I don't know that we do that for alternates or members of the board.
So you, we, should we refer to it as alternate? What should we?
Yeah, generally, we used to refer to it as alternate, alternate Engelmann or whoever. And honestly, Cindy, it's up to you. If you're comfortable with it, if you don't care, we can leave it as is.
Well, if generally you don't, then I would prefer it to be how it is generally done.
That's fine, so we'll.
I mean, I know my address is out there in other places, but if that's the way it's done, then I'm like.
You only saw that in one place, correct? On page seven?
On page seven.
Okay, I will strike that. Alternate. Zoning Commission. Anything else? Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from August 4th to 2022 as amended. Moved by Crew. Seconded by Marzullo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's been approved. It's okay with the board, I'd like to skip ahead to a matter that has not, it actually came up today, so it has not appeared on the agenda yet, but Inspector Wilson would like to have a few minutes to discuss the matter with us. Go ahead, Inspector Wilson.
Okay, thank you. Well, we had a representative come in today from 620 Construction. These are the folks that built the first, First Day School Supply Building that sits on Center Road. But First Day is proposing an addition to the building that sits in the back, the original building. And so I told Mr. Copley today that he would have to have a site plan review, and we're going to put it on the agenda for your August 6th, I believe it is.
Certainly not August.
I'm sorry, October, October 6th.
October 6th, correct.
And like I said, we just got it today, but we're putting together a package for all of you, of course. And it's a, the current building is 46,400 square feet, and this new addition will be 32,000 square feet, so it's going to be a pretty large addition. And before we get you the packet, we'll, of course, look at parking and setbacks and everything, and hopefully have it all ready for you, prior to the, to the 6th, of course. But that was my main reason, I wanted to let you know that it was coming.
Perfect. And this is on the parcel with the existing building, correct?
I'm sorry, what?
This is on the parcel with the existing building. They've got two parcels there, and it's on the rear of those two parcels, which already has one existing building. And just for your own knowledge, so if you look at subsection 6B10, the rule says that no use, change of use, or new use shall be permitted until such use has received written site plan approval from the township zoning commission, from the township zoning commission that the collision bond has been filed, and the zoning inspector has issued the necessary permit pursuant to chapter 11 site plan review. I don't think that this is a new use, change of use, or a no use, but then the language continues. Any modification or alterations which deviate from this final site plan shall require additional review. And that's where I think that we need to come up with a system as to how we're going to better review these. So I did ask Inspector Wilson to err on the side of providing us the opportunity to review it and make decisions, particularly when it's something substantial like 32,000 square feet. It is in the rear of the parcel, so I don't imagine it'll be too much problem, but I'd like us to just err on the side of having it come before us, so we have an opportunity to look at it, suggest if there's any landscaping revisions that we would like to see to kind of fit it in with the community. Now, this is industrial, I should say, not a business, but that's where it's going to be from.
Just to be clear, this is on the old building, not the new building that they're in.
Correct.
So the old building that we basically can't even see behind the new building?
That's right.
Okay.
I don't know if you remember, but they, they were doing a turkey bowl, and they were playing, yeah. But it's on that field back there. I think it's a, don't quote me on this, but I think it's a four acre lot. Yeah. You know, the first, the old building is supposed to sit on a four acre.
They're not going to be asking for the height variance again, are they?
What's that?
They're not going to be asking for the height variance again, are they?
No, it's 28 feet, so they won't need a, I don't think they'll need any variances, but again, we're going to look at it close before we say that. As you remember, the front building needed a height.
Five foot height.
Variance, and it needed a setback from the street variance. But this building is a different lot and a different building.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Anything else?
Thank you very much for letting me come in early.
Absolutely. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Oh, actually, Tom, before you skedaddle, did you have an opportunity to ask the question that we asked last night?
I did, so why don't, can you stay for one, a couple minutes? Because I was going to actually transition to that next anyways, so that way he's here if you have any more questions. So there were a couple of questions that were raised Tuesday, and so I thought we'd start with those topics. And then we can feed into the substantive amendments, but I at least want to present to you what I found out so far. So we spoke about a few things with respect to nuisances. We do have a system where when a complaint is filed, whether it's a nuisance complaint, some other sort of zoning complaint, a form is completed, and that form is then prepared, reviewed, they annotate on it whether there has been a zoning issue that requires further review, or if there's no zoning violation, and that complaint is filed. It currently isn't filed in a way that's really beneficial to us. In other words, they can't just pull out a file folder and say, here are all the nuisance complaints. And so I have asked them to figure out something, whether it's an Excel sheet, or just how they're filing them, so that anytime, any one of us can go up and ask for that folder, and we can kind of generally see what sorts of nuisances or other complaints have been filed in the past two years or something, to give us a handle as to what sorts of issues the township's facing. Suzanne did indicate that probably the top three nuisances that we receive complaints for are debris, junk cars, overgrown vegetation, grass not being cut, and noise. That I think addresses that portion of it. I will also say that back in the 2013 amendments to the zoning regulation, prior to that, we had a fee that we charged when, that we could charge on like a per day basis if they were in violation of our zoning regulations. We changed that in 2013 in section 12.4 to say that we'll just charge what the ORC allows us to charge, and at least Suzanne, Suzanne indicated that there, that might not have as much teeth as saying, this is the fee that we're going to charge on a per day basis. So it is something that we might want to go back and look at why that happened, and see if there should be additional revisions to, to try to give us, you know, more, try to give the zoning department the ability to incentivize compliance better. So that was it with respect to nuisances. With respect to fencing, you'll remember that I had said that the, that the new fee schedule I had thought included a fee for fencing, and then when I looked at it, it didn't. The reason that it didn't is because of our language that says a no fee permit. The township would like to, for everything that occurs from a zoning perspective, whether it's a final site plan, a preliminary site plan, a zoning inspection, they would like to be able to recover the costs associated with that. And so for fencing, what they do is they do a single inspection. They ask that the holes be dug, and that's when they're inspecting. They're really inspecting to confirm that the fencing is the appropriate sizing, so it doesn't exceed the six foot limit, and also that if it's in front of the house, it has the proper transparency. Remember, it can only be 50% opaque. I assume that if you're able to establish where the, where the lot property lines are, you'll also try to confirm that it's within those to the extent you can. I realize that that might be challenging, but that's currently what we're doing with fencing. And so if we strike out the no fee permit is required for fencing, that'll give the township trustees the opportunity to impose a fee as they see fit to recover their costs. Again, we're not able to charge fees that are essentially a taxation, but we are allowed to recover costs associated with the work that we're performing. With respect to pond, here's where I think Mr. Marzullo's thinking on accessory structure came from. If you look at the definitions, chapter 3, structure. A structure is anything constructed or erected with a fixed location on the ground, attached to something having a fixed location on the ground, or resting upon the ground, including, but not limited to signs, buildings, sheds, fences, swimming pools, ponds, and lakes. And so since we say there that a pond is a structure, then when you look at accessory structure, it becomes an accessory structure. I talked to the zoning department about this as well, and they are saying they're only using it as a structure for purposes of permit, which is just what we felt that they were doing, but it is confusing because it's technically an accessory structure, and really should meet the setbacks of an accessory structure, which are inconsistent with the setbacks that we have for fencing, and then they are not using it for that copulation for the sizing of an accessory structure relative to the primary. But I can understand how the interpretation would be that it would have to, given that we've defined it here as an example, as ponds being a structure. So one option for that to resolve that would just be simply remove ponds and lakes from structures and leave chapter 4 saying, for purposes of a permit, it constitutes a structure, and not provide it as an example within the, what constitutes a structure on the definition. So I think that those were the questions that were raised during our Tuesday meeting. You know, while we've got Inspector Wilson here, if you have any other questions about that, I think you found it was a great time.
So you know about a fence, if somebody comes in and inquires, if they don't inquire, you just get, somebody tells you about it, or you just happen to see it driving around?
Well, yeah, where we get most of our information is from, oh, oops.
The neighbor.
And we, we are now on their email list, and we'll get something, and somebody's digging, and it says on their fence, and then Suzanne sends out a, a packet saying you need a permit, and then we follow up on it. And we didn't used to do that, but now it's been very effective.
That's a great, that's a great.
That was enlightening to me, because I knew we turned, left the county to it, because we were only concerned at six feet at one point.
Yeah, so we, I think we've overcome that problem of missing fences, but, and to add to your thoughts on nuisance, one of the things that zoning gets into is abandoned houses. And we, we've kind of got into that in the last three or four months, and we're starting to clean up some of these abandoned houses. A lot of times, the people that own them are on estate, and Tom Z has been working very hard on that, and he's doing a great job.
But with any nuisance, the challenge is the prolonged process that it's currently taking. You know, trustees change hands, the zoning inspectors have moved around, and so a nuisance is taking a very long time to make itself through the process, to send the letters. I think we have currently one that's sitting with the legal department at the prosecutor's office for review, and that one's been ongoing since 2000 or so, a very long time. So nuisances are certainly a challenge. I think that we need to look more into how we can better enforce them. I know that the zoning department and trustee Augustine have been reaching out to Montville Township, for instance. They have a much more streamlined process, and they're using outside counsel as part of their nuisance, you know, notice process to hopefully streamline that. I think they're only giving like 15 days or something to comply before they start taking action. So there are certainly things that the township can do, but I don't know if it's a zoning commission thing, other than potentially looking at the fee structure. It's more of what the trustees and what the zoning department can do to.
Who governs and defines that process?
I think it's set by the trustees, for the most part.
Yeah, so for instance, with the abandoned houses, I'm working with the Dyna County Planning Commission for grants that will scope up in January for those abandoned homes. Tom Z is our other zoning inspector, he works underneath Mr. Wilson, and he is basically the person who goes all the nuisance complaints and goes, sends the letters, and tracks all of that, works with the legal team on all of those, and actually just had emailed him the day of your last meeting on Tuesday, and said, Tom, I want to sit down with you and go over the top five nuisance homes that we have in the township, and I think that's a good starting point for us. It was just ironic that it happened right before your conversation here Tuesday.
Like in terms of the actual process itself, I think at one point I heard we send three letters every 30 days or something like that, and then it goes up the chain, and more letters get sent out, and I think, who, who defines that process? Is that ORC drives that? That's at a county level?
I, we have to be very careful. It's, it's really more legal. Prosecutor's office will come back and say, you haven't done enough as far as notification, or you haven't defined what that notification is. To Mr. Mar, or Mr. Fisher's point, we had a case on River Road that I've been asking the trustees to pursue, 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 and they, we agreed finally to pursue it, and sitting in the township for almost 14 or 15 years, and I sent it back to the prosecutor's office, and it's been there with him for about two months now, because it's not high priority. So one of the things that I had on my agenda potentially for the next trustee meeting is to look at hiring Trina, who does all the Montville legal with regard to nuisance complaints and cleanups, because she's a much more efficient process.
I had asked for that when I, that was on BZA, that we, a lot of times, people would come in for something, and we're discussing that we're probably not going to do it, or whatever. Well, inevitably, they say, well, they can do it over here, and that sort of thing. So we had accumulated a pretty healthy list. In fact, you just can drive up and down the street and see, but that we hire somebody outside. And at one time, we did it in our fight with Brunswick over water, they hired an outside local person, but his outside counsel, made some kind of deal where he'd get the settlement would go to him, and the township would have no exposure or no money involved in it, so.
Well, I have spoken to Trina, and she has a special municipality rate that she's done to us, so I just have to get, you know.
I would hope we would do that, because there's some situations that you're well aware of that really should be addressed, and waiting for the county is, I can understand, I don't want to be bothered with it. I mean, you know.
So, and I do think that that goes hand in hand, what trustee Augustine said, we should be looking at in our zoning regulation as potentially part of our next amendments is, you know, again, we're collectively looking at these things and figuring out, okay, if we are hiring an outside consultant to send these notices, how can the township recover those fees? Is it within the Ohio Revised Code, or do we need to amend our stat, our resolution to allow for this collection of those fees? Because I do think that if the township has to incur cost because of a nuisance.
Well, after she talks to this guy, since he's already doing it, he should be able to fill in with.
What, what they do is they assess the property. So any cost that we encumber will be assessed on the property.
And Mr. Spellman, when you speak, Judy had asked to speak closer to the microphone, remove the microphone close a few. You and I both have soft voices, and she said it's hard sometimes to pick up your voice on the microphone.
So I assume that if we go down this road with nuisances, we'll have some sort of triage or grading system as to what we're going to do. Because if it's something where someone's got long grass, and then they cut it after they've been notified three times, it's no longer a nuisance until it grows back up again in another 90 days. And now it's a different complaint, and it's a different, different thing you have to go down. Whereas an abandoned house, that's abandoned and basically in perpetuity.
I think the ones that you're really looking at right now are the ones that have a junk in the front yard and abandoned homes.
Lots of vehicles.
Those are the ones that they're really.
And equipment, equipment, vehicles, that sort of thing. I think those stand out like sore thumbs.
Right.
But I think that's an excellent beginning. Good, I'm glad we're starting to at least take another look at it.
So. Perfect. Thank you, Inspector Wilson. Now you can enjoy.
Sorry to hold you up.
Oh, no, it's, I'm glad to be here, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Have a good weekend. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
So I think if it's okay with everyone today, I, instead of jumping around by topic, because I think we've handled most of the topics that will have most discussion, I'd like to just go through in, by page order, and discuss those, the amendments that we've already went through, and hopefully confirm that those are still accurate, and then the amendments that we've yet to discuss, start discussing those. So I will go ahead and share my screen.
Which document are you on?
I am on the one with the substantive edits. Thank you. Okay, this is just identifying that section in the table of contents, that there will be a B3 added. In the definitions, this is a topic that we have not discussed. If you look at page 11, I believe, and I'm going to have to refer in that book, because the page numbers will be off on the track change. Yes, on page 11, you'll see that we have a definition for lot with of, and then we see lot, then we say C lot depth. And I think that that's just to note that there's a lot with versus a lot depth, so that you realize that those go hand in hand, they're definitions going in different directions. And so I would just suggest, and this came from, again, our zoning department, C in comparison to lot depth, just to identify why we're saying C lot depth. Anyone have any concerns with that amendment? Perfect. Move on to the next one. This is, it appears now on, yes, it appears on page 14, thank you, is the definition of short-term dwelling rental and short-term owner-occupied dwelling rental. And I'll just quickly read those, they're the definitions that we've had for quite some time now. Any dwelling that is rented in its entirety for not more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the primary resident, from which the primary resident, owner, or other interested party receives monetary compensation, and the primary resident is not present and personally living on the premise during the time of the rental. There's also short-term owner-occupied dwelling rental, which is any dwelling of which a portion is rented for not more than 30 consecutive days by persons other than the primary resident, from which the primary resident, owner, or other interested party receives monetary compensation. The only thing that I want to note about this is we had 28 days, and at some point we expanded to 30 days. And I just want to remind people that if, a lot of tenancy agreements have a fixed term, let's say of one year, and then they become a month-to-month, they can continue on as a month-to-month renter. And so there's a potential that those month-to-month renters, because they're one month, if a month has 30 days, they meet the 30-day limit. Because it's continuing from one month to the next month, you could say maybe it's not a consecutive, I just wanted to note that. I don't have a problem with it, as is currently written, but I did want to note that as a distinction as to why we might want to put 28 days as we originally had instead of 30. Keep it as is? Perfect. Okay, for the definition of a sign wall, which appears on page 16 of our zoning regulation. We just wanted to clarify what therefrom extends. So we have a sign painted on, attached to, or erected against the outside wall of a building with the exposed face of the sign in a plane parallel to the plane of said wall, extending not more than 12 inches therefrom, and which does not project from above the roof line or beyond the corner of the building. So we're just suggesting changing therefrom to from said wall. Can you read that, or do you want me to? I probably should zoom in. On the TVs, if you're, any objections? No. If you look at adult material store, which says hand, you're probably asking how I discovered these and I didn't. Our wonderful administrative assistant Suzanne Pirland found a lot of these issues, but I think that it was wonderful, and we should correct it before it does become an issue. So if you look at adult material store, which is on page 20 of our zoning regulations, we say that the store complies with the restrictions set forth in section 17.4C. Seven, chapter 17 deals with riparian setbacks.
Oh, you changed it on this one?
I changed it to 16.2.
Oh, okay, you said what? Because I'm like, wait, wait, mine says 16.2.
16.2 is where you see the specifications and restrictions for what is an adult material in retail store. So I'm pretty sure that that's what they meant to refer to at that point, instead of 17.
Yeah.
Any objections? Perfect.
Can you go to 16.2 while we're on the topic?
Sure. Oh, I was right there. Go ahead. Third line down. It says be considered hand adult material store instead of pan. Perfect.
Sorry, I caught that the other day, and I just want to make sure we got it in.
I love it. Thank you, sir. Now unfortunately, I have to go back up and find where I was. Okay, so for fences, which is section 4.9, this one we've already discussed. Let me see if I can find quickly the page number. If any of you happen to have, page number is quickly available on 26. Which page? 24, 26? Thank you. It currently says that a no fee permit shall be required from the township, and as we discussed last time, we would just like to remove that no fee permit, so that it gives the township the opportunity to recover costs as the township trustees see fit. Any objections? Section 4.1, which deals with ponds and lakes. And Mr. Spellman, I think that you are a grammar guy, so hopefully, let me know if I placed the only in the correct spot. We discussed last time at the addition of the word only. So it says, public or private ponds or lakes with a natural bottom containing over two feet depth of water shall be considered as structures only for the purpose of permits. Is that good?
Yeah, it's fine.
Perfect. To this point, you did not, I have not amended, because we hadn't discussed whether we want to change the structure, the definition of the structure, to remove ponds. ponds as an example of the structure, and just let it stay within section 4.11, that it constitutes a structure for purposes of permit. So I guess, how do people feel about leaving ponds and lakes as structures within the definition of a structure?
Personally, I think it's fine in the definition. I feel like you're changing the definition of structure. If you remove it up top, now we're altering what a structure is within here by saying for purposes of a permit, right? A structure is this. Just kidding, if you want to put a pond, and it's actually this too. Like, something feels off about that. So I'd rather have it as a super, have it defined above as it is.
Have it defined in the definition section.
As it is.
Correct.
And then for clarification, that only for permit only, for permit only, within then the section here dedicated to ponds and lakes. In other words, I'd say leave it.
I'm okay with that. Mr. Rizzoli, you're the one who had brought this concern up. Are you also okay with what?
I was only concerned with it for the, just for the calculation at the back.
Which it's not being used for, but if it's not being utilized.
Perfect.
Do it like the old days. It's only Inspector of the side.
What about the, do we need to mention anything about a duration? Because I know we kind of got into this last year about a retention pond versus a actual pond.
So over two feet depth of water for at least 48 consecutive hours? Or, I mean, I don't know, because of rainfall, you know?
Exactly. And I guess what I'm more concerned about is, we talked about this specifically for senior apartments, that, okay, this is going to be a three-foot retention pond. And Davy Resource Group wanted to say, well, it's not a pond, because its design is to actually trap water and get rid of it. Okay, I get that. But then if it clogs, all of a sudden it becomes a pond. And I mean, I don't know if it's something we need to work on, or is it just something that now it becomes a, we treat it as a zoning violation, and then we can approach it that direction? That might be the better solution.
Yeah. I think, I don't know that there's been any problems with, you know, ponds or detention basins or retention ponds, you know?
We had one, actually, when Bill, when you were chair, when this guy up there, when he got all irritated when we, the...
Dynamically?
Nope, nope. Up on 303, you know who I'm talking about, where it came through and it was eroding all the land next to his building up there. And he was getting upset about it because of the stormwater runoff not being managed properly.
That was the riparian area. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, you got a little animated with it.
Yeah. Let me ask you, it was not a problem with, is this a pond or is it not a pond? This scenario?
No, it wasn't, is this a pond, is it not a pond? But it's certainly been an issue where we have runoff becoming a problem.
Yeah.
And I could see this potentially becoming a problem where it, someone decides, hey, I'm going to block this because there's too much runoff coming through my yard.
Great. I think that that would have to be dealt with in probably the riparian section, chapter 17 of our code, if we wanted to do anything with that. Although I will say, you know, most water issues now are handled by Medina sanitary engineers. They're, and Medina is actually working on strengthening their process for reviewing, you know, potential flooding issues as well right now. That was brought up at the last Medina Planning Commission meeting, so I don't know how much the township is currently involved in that. All right. Leave it for now and...
Yep. I mean, I'm fine with it. It's just potential pitfalls, that's all.
Thank you. In section 4.15, which is page 29 of our resolution, as you remember, currently it says that the township's zoning commission may grant a similar use finding. And we felt that that should be handled by the Board of Zoning Appeals, because when you look at it, it looks like Duncan factors in a judicial process as opposed to legislative. So the recommendation from the zoning department is to change that to Board of Zoning Appeals. Any issues? Perfect. We'll move forward. Section 5.2, which is just identifying the zoning districts, we'll amend that to say that B2 is a light business district. We'll also add in a B3, which is the historical town center district. Chapter 6, this is just the heading of chapter 6.
Will we change the name?
We will. I'll address that at the end. Chapter 6, in the page 35, we're just going to, again, amend section 6B2 to say light business district, and we're going to add in a section 6B3, which is the historical town center district. No objections there at the same. Accessory buildings and structures, and I might have only amended this.
Thank you.
Can you stand up so you can do it with the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
Back on that, chapter 6.
This is Cindy Engelmann. Just, I don't know if you're on, I want to make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy Engelmann. First paragraph there, district, chapter 6, that first page, district regulations include seven sections outlining each of the zoning districts.
So I'll change that to seven instead of six, and the new number, seven instead of So this is six, chapter 6, R1.2, permitted uses within section D, accessory buildings and structures. We're going to amend line item number six to say, remove wood-fired boilers, hydronic heaters, wood furnaces, or wood stoves pursuant to chapter 18, and then just instead say alternative energy facilities pursuant to chapter 18. That was discussed last time. So no objections there at the same. Let me quickly copy that link. We're going to need it for chapter R2. 6R1.6, this is the portion that we started to have a conversation. Go ahead.
Can you go back up to the page you were just on? And instead of under D, under E, accessory uses, number six.
What page are you on?
I'm on...
Oh, thank you.
It's 39.
Same language.
Six.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah.
Wood fire, fired boilers.
Okay, so that is in, just for the record, section E, accessory uses, item number six, amend it the same way as...
It's really interesting, though, because we've called out, for number five, called out the roof and wall-mounted solar arrays.
Well, we did not do that.
Above.
Above. We can remove line item five then, can't we? Because that's within the chapter 18.
I mean, I guess the one above is speaking specifically to the buildings, whereas this case, solar array is, it's an explicit use, but it's almost, I don't know, just combine the two and say alternative energy uses pursuant of 18.
So this will say uses instead of facilities?
Mm-hmm.
And I agree with you. So strike five, well, strike five, which will, and then amend six to say alternative energy uses pursuant to chapter 18, and I'll be renumbered five. Remember that when we get to the R2, because I've not made this. Now moving on to 6R1.6, which is on page 43 of our zoning regulations. The proposed amendment, which we saw to discuss in the zoning commission, is to amend A1 to say, to strike through structures. So just say accessory buildings shall not be closer than 15 feet from the principal building, shall have a front setback of not less than the principal building, and shall conform to the side and rear yard setbacks of the district in which they are located. Add in point two, which is accessory structures excluding accessory buildings, swimming pools, and fences shall not be closer than five feet from the principal building, front setback of not less than the principal building, and shall conform to the side and rear yard setbacks of the district in which it is located. Swimming pools shall not be closer than 15 feet from the principal building, shall have a front setback of not less than the principal building, and shall conform to the side and rear yard setbacks of the district in which it is located. Item number four, fences shall comply with the requirements of section 4.9. 4.9 specifies the, what you would have to comply with, with fencing, but there would be no setbacks other than the road right of way, obviously.
I have two comments. So something seems grammatically strange with number two. I don't know how to, I don't know if this is wrong, or how to make it better. And Marcus, perhaps you know from more of like a legal perspective.
I'm a patent attorney.
Oh.
Not a language guru.
Like, we say accessory structures, comma, excluding accessory buildings, comma, swimming pools and fences. So are we saying accessory structures, swimming pools and fences shall not be closer? We're saying?
No.
Accessory structures.
What is excluded is accessory buildings, swimming pools, and fences. I can put that in parentheses instead, and it would make it easier to identify. I don't know if parentheses are, is the correct thing there, but it makes it easier, I think.
Yeah, I'm just...
I had a hard time reading that, too.
Yeah.
I read it several times. I'm like, that's...
In the world of...
Especially because accessory is used twice in this sentence, while you're separating accessory structures from accessory buildings. So it was like, okay, let me wrap my head here. So I think the parentheses would help.
Maybe try that, and maybe planning services will give...
They might give feedback, or legal might give feedback on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to do accessory structures, open parentheses, excluding accessory buildings, swimming pools, fences, close parentheses, shall not be closer than five feet.
I think that's good, perhaps. Ms. Engelmann has that...
I was going to just recommend, start out by excluding, you know, what you're excluding, and then, comma, accessory structures shall be no closer than five feet. But I think that works, so.
I don't know what the right English is.
Sometimes flipping the sentence around helps.
Yeah.
So, because like in paragraph three, you start out with swimming pools, you know, you start out with the item.
Well, that's why I don't want to flip it, is because I like to start it like, one has accessory buildings, that's the item, two has accessory structures, that's the item, three, swimming pools, item four, fences, item.
No, I think parentheses look good. Perfect.
So then my second comment in this section is, with number three, we have swimming pools shall not be closer, blah, blah, blah. You have a comment over there, hot tubs?
Right.
So if I'm reading this as general public, I'm like, okay, so now I know what to do with accessory buildings, accessory structures, and swimming pools. So where am I going to put my hot tub?
And that's the problem. So if we look at chapters, so a hot tub is a swimming pool.
By definition?
Basically. If you look at page 29, which is section 4.12, dealing with swimming And you look at A, it says, "All in-ground and above-ground permanent or semi-permanent for seasonally used swimming pools having a depth of two feet or more of water shall be considered as structures." So really, our only definition is something above ground or below ground that holds more than two feet of water. And a hot tub would meet that. And that's where I said, I think that, and I think unfortunately, it requires a fair amount of discussion and working through the language, and so I don't know that this is, we'll be able to include within this text package, unless we wanted to push this back pretty significantly. But I wanted to note that currently, the zoning department is interpreting hot tubs as swimming pools, and they have to be 15 feet from your house. And that is one of the issues that the zoning department's facing, because many people want your hot tub to be right outside your doors, so you're not walking 15 feet in the middle of winter time.
Do they need a permit to put in a hot tub?
Because they constitute swimming pools, yes.
I'd be curious how many permits for hot tubs we've received.
I'd be curious how many permits we receive for, you know, those kits that are covered, you know, gazebos. How many pergolas we receive, requests for permits for those kind of items? I think if you buy it as a kit, a lot of people just assemble it. You know, if you're hiring someone to build an in-ground pool or an above-ground pool, they're probably coming in for a permit. But any of those items where you haul it in in one day and place it, even a lot of sheds that are, you know, they come in on one day and place them, how many of those do we get permits for? You're supposed to.
So if you have a pool, you have to put a fence around it. You're suggesting they'd have to...
You don't.
You don't have to put a fence.
But not on the county level?
No.
No.
No. On the H.O.A. level, we require, because the county and the township do not have requirements for a fence.
But try to get insurance if you don't have a...
Yeah, I know, that's a different issue there, if they make an inspection. The only way we know about all this stuff is if they have a loud party and somebody complains.
Correct.
I mean...
Correct. So it's just something I think that we should explore. You know, I don't, again, I think that it's going to take a lot of work. And I think that the way that we potentially do it is to look at the modular nature of hot tubs. If it's a unit that can be hauled in and basically plugged in, and it doesn't have any outside structures other than the unit itself, I think that that might be somehow how we try to delineate a hot tub from a swimming pool. But even that might not work, because there are swimming pool kits that have that. So we'd have to work on it. But I did want to note that, as it currently is, swimming pools have to be 15 feet away, and hot tubs have to be 15 feet away. And with our proposed amendment, they still have to be 15 feet away. So we are not solving that issue. Just a comment.
Put it on the backlog.
Perfect. Okay. 16, 6R, I think we're going to have to change, this is where I have to change the language that I have not amended, I believe. Let's see, it would be found in 6R2.2, permitted uses, which here on, if anyone finds the page, I'm looking. It is on page 57. Under item C, it is number five, alternative energy facilities. And we're just going to say alternative energy facilities pursuant to chapter 18, remove the wood-fired hydronic heaters, wood furnaces, and water stoves language. And similarly, in accessory uses, which is item D, we're going to strike through five, we're going to strike through a large portion of six, and say, alternative energy uses pursuant to chapter 18. So that matches the R1.
Pursuant to chapter 18, so that matches the R1. 6R2.6. You'll see.
So here you changed it to five feet, right?
What?
6R2.6.
6R.
Okay, wait a minute, let me read.
The big difference that you're seeing here is for whatever reason, for accessory buildings, the language, while it had a very similar meaning, was worded slightly differently than the 6R1 for accessory buildings. So what I did is I actually struck through that entire language and just copied it from the 6R1. So if you review the strike through and underline, they principally have the same meaning. It was just worded different for some reason. So I just matched those up. And then there is the accessory structures and we will change that to say to include the parentheses. And otherwise, those are the same as the 6R1.
Questions, concerns? Perfect. On page 63, we are just amending the title to add in the B3 district. And also right below the title, amending the B2 to say light business district and adding in the B3 historic, historical town center. I'm going to say historical town center district, which is what we're officially calling it. Then we're going to amend subsection 6B1 to add in the B3. And item E, not B.
Go ahead.
Super grammar police. I don't know if we should call it historical or historic. And whether or not there's a difference. I'm not an English teacher, but.
I like historic district.
Historic. Historical ever.
Adjective.
Say here, I'm a scientist.
Both can be an adjective.
So we, I could just do a global. So you think it should be historic?
Historic, yeah.
Either, either word.
Historic.
Historic it is.
It's shorter.
Can I make that amendment at the end because that's a global. Thank you.
Some people it's historic, some it's historic.
Let's see, and E, again, we're just saying the purpose is to establish a general business district and light business district that provides. So we're just identifying that the purpose of the B1 and B2 is similar. We are then amending F to refer to the historic town center district, B3. We're removing the identifier that it's Boston Road and West 130th Streets because it's no longer located there. And then at the end, I did want to make sure that again, tying into the historic nature that we're seeking to achieve while maintaining the historic nature, not historical nature, I assume, of town center. Any questions, concerns? No?
Yes. Just that paragraph, couple of cleanup. Last paragraph, this B3 district serves as a township's commercial hub, instead of hubs.
Thank you.
And then two lines down, maintain the existing small town setting.
Good now?
Perfect.
Section 6B2, use and regulation. That's on page 64. Again, we're just adding in that there is a B3 district there. Similarly, use is permitted by right. We're just adding in the notion that there's a B3. Additional uses, same thing. Section 6B3, schedule of permitted uses. So we've added a column for the historic town center. And we've moved over the permitted and conditional uses as we've discussed. The, I think that the only ones that I wanted to make sure that I drew attention to are the, because there was some discussion on it, I think it was outdoor recreation. Where is that? Outdoor recreation, we are now making as a conditional use within the B2 district. And we are removing it and we're not allowing it, which in the town center, which is currently not allowed in town center. So we've done an expansion of where outdoor recreation is permitted. We have removed from the B2 district dwelling units above the first floor and we are allowing those in the B3 district. And we are removing as a conditional use hospitals, medical clinics, urgent care facilities, ambulance, emergency medical services and senior citizen residential facilities from the B3 district, which are currently permitted or conditional within town center. So those are the major changes that we've made. Go ahead. I don't know what I just did. Did you have a comment, Mr. Merzouin?
I mean, I know we spent a lot of time on this, but now that we're, I think we're agreed that we're going to change zoning on the property of Bellis and 606.
To residential.
To residential, then it just seems like a simpler solution is just move the section over on West 130th and Boston into B1 and maintain just two business districts.
Well, the reason that we decided to keep that as a separate one is because there are also different regulations with respect to the size of buildings that can be there. And I think has its own identity. So I don't know that we need to have those grouped together. The other thing that I want to note, and Mr. Pearl also brought up an email and I have not forwarded to you yet, but I will. Haven't had a chance yet. Sorry, Mr. Pearl, is, and I think that this goes along with fixing the definition or updating the definition of automobile service station. Within the B3 district, we're not allowing an automobile service station. It's currently not allowed or conditional within the B2 district either. So Mr. Pearl expressed concern that we won't be allowed to have charging stations within the B3 district. I think that goes hand in hand with the amendments that we would be looking at as part of how we define automobile service station and fuel. And we worked through that with respect to that definition. So I think it makes sense to revisit that aspect at the same time that we work through the automobile service station language. And then we look into whether it makes sense to allow alternative energies within the B3 district that are distinct from gasoline and other fuels or whether we keep them together. But I thought that was, it went with that. And so I didn't know if it should make it within this amendment or not.
Okay.
Section 6B4, again, we're just adding in the notion that there are three business districts. We are also then looking at the schedule of area and lot requirements. And we have not changed any of these. We've just imported over from the B2 district, the same, the current requirements of the B2 district, which is where town center is located now. We are applying to the B3 district. So there's been no change there. And this is, by the way, where I was saying that if we moved the West 130th Boston over to the B1 district, they'd have, for instance, a minimum lot area would have to be 30,000 square feet. You'd have a certain lot, minimum lots that they might not meet yet. So I thought it was just cleaner to keep them within a B2 because they're already established based upon the current requirements. Again, in the note of schedule B4, we're just adding in the notion that there's a B3 district. Building setback requirements, same thing. We are just importing over the current B2 requirements to also apply to the B3. Parking setback requirements, same thing. We're just moving over the B2 into the B3. So there should be no change. And I think maybe in the next iteration or as we work through design standards, we might be adjusting these more so that the B2 and the B3 don't have the exact same standards. But again, this is for a starting point for future work. Section 6B7, which is on page 67, we're just adding in the B3 district to that. Section 6B8, also on page 67, adding in the B3. Section 6B9, which appears on page 70. That's where we get into design criteria for the town center. And so I've amended that to, from referencing the B2 to instead only referencing the B3 because it was relevant to town center section. So effectively, that means that the B2 no longer has the same design standards, including sidewalks and pedestrian activity. I don't know that most of the B2 up by West 130th and Boston currently have sidewalks. But just wanted to note that unless we amend B to say 6B2 and 6B3, we are broadening the options of designs within the West 130th Boston quarter. Okay, with it is proposed or? Go ahead.
Okay.
Again, this is still within the page 71, within the development and design criteria, change it from 6B2 to 6B3 because that's what that relates to now. The review process, which is 6B10, again, just add in the notion of a B3 district. There was, and this is really more grammar, but I had left it in here, in the I1 6I1.2, there was a random strike through written site plan. I think the strike through was just accidentally included. So I removed the strike through there. Okay, and chapter seven, and this is a new topic that we have not discussed yet. This is for page 82. Applications submitted to Township Board of Zoning Appeals. We currently have that the fee shall be paid at the original hearing of the permit holder. Again, this was with working with the zoning department and they suggested or noted that they actually are receiving the fee at the time that the application is submitted, not at the hearing. And so I just wanted to amend that to be consistent with what current practice. So that will be changed to the fee shall be paid at the time that the application is submitted. This is also a new section or new topic of discussion. And this pertains to, again, on page 83, violations and revocation. So we've talked about this a little bit. If there is a when there is a, currently, let me read it. Currently, the breach of any condition safeguard or requirement set forth in the conditional zoning certificate shall constitute a violation of the zoning resolution. Such violation shall be subject to all enforcement provisions of this zoning resolution. If they are to comply with any condition safeguard or requirement of the conditional zoning certificate or failure to correct a breach of any condition safeguard or requirement of the zoning, conditional zoning certificate shall constitute cause for possible revocation of the conditional zoning certificate by the township zoning inspector. In the event the township zoning inspector finds cause to revoke a conditional zoning certificate within 30 days of the revocation, the conditional use holder may file an appeal with the Township Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with chapter 13, Township Board of Zoning Appeals of this zoning resolution. What there is not a provision for is how does a conditional use cease? So for a legal non-conforming use, there is a section that is for a discontinuance of use. And that, but that only applies to legal non-conforming. And what we say is if there's a discontinuance of use for a period of two years, they're no longer allowed to resume that legal non-conforming use. So let's say you have a home within the business district. If that home is not being used as a home for a period of two years, that home can't be used as a home for, in the future. It now has to be used as a business. There's no similar thing for a conditional use. So once the conditional use is granted, it's currently granted in perpetuity. What we would like to do is match that to what is done with a legal non-conforming use and say that if you don't continue to use the conditional use for a period of two years, we can step in and remove that conditional use. An example of this is look at the adult daycare. The adult daycare was actually a legal non-conforming use. So as a result, after they had ceased being a bar for a period of two years, the township came in and said, you can't be a bar anymore. You've ceased operations. Had that instead been a conditional use, the township could not step in and take away their ability to have that conditional use. That doesn't mean that they couldn't reapply for it as a conditional use, but at least the township has a means of moving properties that shouldn't be granted a conditional use any further, the opportunity to take that away. And so I would like to, and I know that I know that Mr. Manley had previously said that sometimes the Board of Appeals would put as a condition that if you stopped using it for a period of time, it would, the condition would cease, correct?
Yeah, but they asked us to, again, in the seminars we went to with all the attorney people, not to do that anymore.
Yeah.
Sometime, I don't know, 2010, somewhere in that period. I can't remember exactly when, but.
And so this has not been vetted by legal yet. I, I, after having several discussions with legal on various topics, my opinion is, and I can understand this as a lawyer, it's better to have the specific language that you have in mind written down and ask for a legal opinion on that very specific language than to say, what about can we do this? What about can we do that? And so I would rather advance this and see what legal has to say about it and what planning services have to say about it. And then when we review it again after the public hearings, we can decide whether to continue with this or not. This is something that the zoning department has asked us to consider, just to give them, again, the option to to have these situations where basically the property hasn't been used for a period of time, two years or more.
See, I think the language has to be strong that this is what will happen as opposed to may, maybe, may, we'll see. Because you're giving the zoning inspector an opportunity.
Do you have the language for?
Make a decision that, you know, will be, could be appealed that there's, you know, an issue here that.
And I certainly think that that's something that legal would have to look at to see if this language is strong enough or not. The other thing I'll note, and I think that this is something that we should certainly revisit as part of a tax amendment anyway, is notice requirements. So vote both for, you know, this sort of violation, revocation, abandonment and for legal abandonment, you know, this discontinuance of use, looking at whether we need to provide some sort of legal notification that we intend to do this prior to doing it. It's something for us to look at, whether the language is there, whether it's already required statutorily. It's just something that I think the zoning commission should explore. But right now I'm just trying to match you know, operations for a conditional use to the same as those of illegal non-conformity. I'd like to get planning services feedback. I like that. I'm just curious though, why, why were we instructed to remove, to stop putting that statement as part of the.
I can't answer that, but all I'm, I mean, I've been here a long time. We've had in zoning inspectors who would take care of their friends and somebody else had a problem. This thing about if you had a wall standing, you could build a house. But if that, we don't like that wall because that was some other wall. You can't redo it here, you know, or you destroyed it yourself. And all those things that went through that. And at least with two inspectors of what was very possibly would take care of their friends and punish somebody else. So.
I could be completely mistaken, but I would suspect that it has something to do with the role of the zoning appeals is to set conditions related to.
Well, we used to do that for a long time.
And then you were told not to. And I'm wondering if it's because really that's a legislative action, not so much.
I can't answer. I don't, I don't, I don't recall anybody referring to anything that the Supreme Court in the state of Ohio or any other court determined. in the state of Ohio or any other court determined that, so I, I don't, that I can recall anyhow.
Set in stone and consistent if it's in the language here.
Right. So put it forward and see what happens?
Sure.
Good.
See what quote experts say.
Outdoor displays, which appear. Oh, chapter seven, where is outdoor displays? Outdoor displays are on page seven, page 87. We're just again introducing the notion of a B3 district. We're skipping ahead to now chapter 11, which pertains to site plan review. And this is again a new topic, so feel free to, if there's, particularly on these new topics, if there's something that you just don't think we should move forward with at this time, I'm not offended by that at all. This one, if you look at our preliminary site plan, which is 11.2A, we have planned commercial and industrial developments. We don't really have, you know, we refer to things as a business, not as a commercial. And so the proposal is just to say, planned business or industrial development instead of commercial. And the final site plan. We have a final site plan that says all proposed conservation developments. So let me read the final site plan. A final site plan that indicates, among other things, the exact location of buildings, parking areas, access drives, restricted open spaces, easements, signs, and outdoor storage areas shall be required for the following. All proposed conservation developments follow review and approval of a preliminary site plan. New construction of all permitted uses in business and industrial districts. Any existing or previously approved development, meeting the criteria of B1 or B2 above, that proposes to alter, reconstruct, or otherwise modify a use or site, including expanding the floor area of the permitted use, increasing the density of the residential development, or changing the use, which requires an increase in the amount of parking, or a change in the site's traffic circulation. Notably, what's not listed here, while conservation developments are listed, subdivisions and planned business and industrial developments, which you see as listed within the preliminary site plan, are not listed in one. And so we have been doing final site plans for quite some time with respect to subdivisions. And so I think that we should make sure that this language, the preliminary site plan requirements match the final site plan. So that's what we're doing with respect to that. We also have an item two, new construction of all permitted uses in the business and industrial district. We don't have final site plan for conditional uses. And if you remember, senior housing was a conditional use, and we just did a final site plan. And it's a very good thing that we did because we reviewed and identified significant landscaping modifications that the BZA had permitted us to do. So I would like to suggest putting new construction of all permitted and conditional uses in here. Again, planning might say, well, the final decision making for conditional is really BZA, so I'm not sure how this is going to work, but I think that we should be okay that we have the authority to do a final site plan. Chapter, or section 11.7. I think that this is just a typo, but they might just say whatever's the final preliminary. But if you look at chapter, chapter 11.7, which is titled Township Zoning Commission Review of Preliminary Site Plan, we then say in reviewing final site plans, the township. And I think that that should say in reviewing preliminary site plans. Chapter, section 11.8 is the Township Zoning Commission Review of Final Site Plan. And there it says the Township Zoning Criteria Commission shall review a final site plan to determine. So the suggestion is just remove final and put preliminary site plan. Good. 16.2, that was just the.
Actually, if I'm reading it correctly, wouldn't it be? The typo would be in the title of 11.7 Township Zoning Commission Review of Final Site Plan, not preliminary.
Township review is 11.8.
Those are the criteria. But the, the actual process and everything, because if you look over at 11.3, we're talking about informal review of the proposal and then the preliminary site plan submission requirements.
And then final site plan. I think, I think that that's 11, I think that is preliminary, because in, so we have 11.4 is preliminary site plan requirements. Then we have 11.5, which is site, final site plan requirements. Then we have general site plan review procedures, which refers to both preliminary and final site plans. And then we have what the review looks like for 11.7 of the preliminary, and then what the review looks like for 11.8 of the final. Okay.
In the, in the headlines, it's preliminary.
Yes, correct. I think that that just follows what the header is. And I think that those three criteria, A, B, and C, the development should be designed to preserve the natural amenities for the site. For example, building location and placement should be developed with consideration given to minimizing the removal of trees and change of topography. The development will result in harmonious groupings of buildings within the proposed development in relation to existing and proposed uses on adjacent property. The development shall have properly designed open spaces that meet the objectives of this resolution. I think that those are all items that we prelimin, that we try to look at as part of the preliminary review process, because we want to catch those issues prior to them starting construction.
Sure.
Because final site plan normally happens once they've already taken down all the trees. Let's see, 16.2, that's the one that Mr. Marzullo identified for an and instead of an and, as it's currently written. See, that's 16.2, if I can find a page. 16.2, which is page 134, just the introduce, introduction of a B3 district. Chapter 18, which is alternative energy uses, which we discussed at the work session. Hang on, Mr. Pearl, let me get through these two items and then.
I have something in chapter 17.
Okay. Go ahead.
Richard Pearl, Marcus, pardon?
Address, I know we know it, but.
1785 King Road.
Thank you.
I was going to try not to speak tonight, but I just can't suppress the urge. Marcus, would you read out loud the title of chapter 17?
Establishment of Perian setbacks.
And then would be, you'd be so kind as to read 17, 1C?
I'm not a big fan of reading. 17.1C. These regulations have been enacted with the Hinkley Township Phase 2 Storm Water Management Program adopted March 1, 2003.
And I have a yes or no question. Does anybody on the zoning board know what that means?
No.
These regulations have been enacted.
Sort of.
Would you be so, and I have just one more. Would you be so kind as to read the very next one, D?
These regulations, originally adopted by Hinkley Township on November 29, 2007, have been enacted under the authority of chapter 519 of the Ohio Revised Code that provides Hinkley Township the authority to regulate the location, size, height, and use of buildings and structures, the area and dimensions of lots and yards, and the use of lands necessary to protect the public health, safety, convenience, and prosperity, and general welfare of the township and its residents.
And same yes or no question. Does anybody on the zoning board know what that means?
Yes.
Yes. You were part of that.
So, so C refers to the storm water management phase two deals with the north west corner of Hinkley, I believe, the northwestern corner of Hinkley.
And also the northeast corner too.
The northeast.
Where it comes by, the golf course, where the river comes through.
Okay. I vaguely remember that.
There was a rush to hurry up and do something because they've been kicking around. I was on a BZA, but I sat in a couple of those meetings and it was kind of a boilerplate that was made available and.
That, that's good enough. I don't want to take up too much time. Going back to C, there is no such thing as a Hinkley Township Phase 2 Storm Water Management Program.
There's supposed to be.
There isn't.
There's supposed to be, yes.
So I'm only asking.
Jim Cancel is in charge of it. Jim Cancel is in charge of it.
Right.
And he did do it. I mean, he.
But it can't be found in the zoning office.
Well, I bet I can't answer. I know he did things.
My only request is would you revisit this for new business?
Yeah, well, we can put it on the list. Our list is pretty exhaustive, so I can't promise it'll be addressed in 2023. I will say though, that neither one of these are actually regulations of the zoning code. In other words, we're not saying that you have to do something in compliance with that. We're just saying that what we've done is in compliance with something, but it's not an imposition on any person, because it's not an actual regulation. Does that make sense?
Yes, what you said makes sense.
Good, because I don't know if it's very circul.
Well, one other, you might check with the service department, because Paul Magavak at that time was also involved because they did testings.
We just sent over probably five huge boxes to the service department that are specific to this.
There's got to be something somewhere, knowing Jim.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
County, I would look at the county level as well, because that was driven by the Soil and Water District.
Yes, it was. Let's hurry up and do this done.
Really what I'm talking about is the wording of C.
Okay, I'm done.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, okay, so. Right, why would you not want us to allow time to get through chapter 18? Chapter 18, which is alternative energy uses. Within 18.5, we are going to strike I and J, which relates to the labeling and securing of electrical and control equipment, and J relates to the screening of accessory components. 18.6, on that same page, we're going to introduce the notion of a B3 district. We are also going to strike I and J from 18.6, which relates to the control equipment being labeled and secured and the screening of accessory components. Page 152, accessory components within 18.7, we are going to remove the labeling and securing of control equipment and the screening of accessory components. 18.8, which appears on page 153, we're going to introduce the notion of a B3 district. 18.8 accessory components, we're going to remove the labeling and securing of the ground mount electrical and control equipment and the screening requirements. That completes substantive amendments that I had for the proposed tax amendments. Any other comments around that? Perfect.
One addition maybe we can talk about. And we could say, we could discuss it at another time, because I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. But on driveways, there is a five foot setback.
Do you have the chapter?
I did at one point. Four, I think it's four.
44.
I'm looking.
Page 44, which is driveways, if it's in chapter 4 section. Page 25. Thank you.
So when you measure your setback from the property line for a driveway is five feet, right? Well, how do you measure the, how do you measure it?
Five foot yardstick?
That was, so if the driveway is raised above your, your neighbor's property, so right, your properties are both the same height, now the neighbor decides to raise the driveway four feet high from the neighbor's property. When you build the driveway, you have to build a base, right? And the base is wider than the top of the, where you're actually driving, correct? How do you measure? Do you measure at the top or do you measure down on the bottom?
Just for clarification also, we're actually, the setbacks are not in chapter 4, that's referenced in.
Sorry.
But the setbacks are within the chapter 6.
Six, okay.
That's an enlightening question.
It happened to someone I know.
Okay.
And unfortunately, so when the property line is now one foot from the base of their driveway, or the, there's only one foot space.
The base of the base.
The base of this four foot driveway, right?
Yeah.
Although the top of the driveway where they drive on is the distance, but the actual bottom of the driveway, which is really part of the driveway, because you wouldn't have a driveway if you didn't have this base.
That, I mean, that's not entirely accurate, because if, if they want to spend substantially more money, they could just build vertically instead of.
Retaining one.
Building it out. We see that on 303, as you're coming through with, they have the deep drainage and they have the, the concrete slabs that are actually holding up the, the driveways and they are straight up and down. There's no, there's no buttressing involved.
But for the sake of measuring, what do you measure? Here's, you have a driveway here and then the base is out four feet because it's, they didn't build, spend the money to do a concrete wall. And the other property line is right here, so now you have one, maybe a foot and a half.
So the edge of the drive.
This is a little.
You're not driving on the foundation.
This is a little different, but I think it, it's similar. You know, I think you're talking about, look, they built it up. And so as a result, you can very easily say, look, they built it up and you should have measured from the edge of the buildup as opposed to the concrete of the buildup. But for my house, we have two driveways, my driveway, my neighbor's driveway are right next to another, and we're both five feet from the property line, our concrete edges. But then, as is column, you have two driveways right next to each other, you have a valley in the middle, because that's the swell where the water comes from. And so you're still have a drop off. And so if you count the base of the driveway as where the base of that swell is, we would both be less than a foot from it. It's just that ours isn't built up, it's that they kind of swale in the middle. And so I don't know how you define the base of a driveway.
I'm just presenting this.
And, and I, I think something that might have a similar precedence would be how we measure the height of a building. And it's from the ground right in front of the, the actual structure. So you can have a beautiful walkout basement, but it's not a 45 foot tall building, it's still a 25 foot tall house, because at the front, you're measuring it from the grade to the peak. There you go, it's 25 feet and you're done. But in the back, where there is a grade, you exceed the 35.
I don't know.
Do you have, I guess, do you have proposed language?
I do, because what's worth passing?
What do they say? Not to put you on the spot, I mean.
I, I.
I put you on the spot, I asked you what the proposed language was.
And she fired back and said.
Yep.
I love when someone.
Take that.
But let me see if I can find it. I don't, I had it on my phone when I was talking with Marcus and I can't, something about measurement, measurement, measurement from the beginning of the slope. So it's the side.
I think that it's the swell, because the swell's got a slope.
Well, when you're, when, yeah.
In this scenario, it also becomes.
Is the base of the natural, natural slope or is it manmade?
Right.
So you're, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, obviously, but I think it's something to think about, because Hinkley is not level. You're going to have a lot more.
Really?
People. People to, to complain, right? Or to bring it up. And here it is, sorry. All driveway surfaces or beginning of slope must be X feet from sideline.
Beginning, you say beginning of slope.
They say beginning of slope.
I think you have to say beginning of.
Bang.
Man need or, you know, non-natural.
So, and the only thing this, what this does.
Where does the slope begin?
So let me just explain what the problems that this causes. When you are building up, off of somebody else's property, what happens? Drainage. So the one property was designed, the one property flowed down because there was a pond over here that is now this other person's property. So this whole property flows down this way. So when you build up four feet, what happens? You flood this whole property.
They didn't put a culvert or something?
Doesn't that become a riparian issue? I mean, you're blocking the natural flow.
They put in a pipe, but the pipe sat up four inches off the ground, not sitting on the ground.
Poor design.
So I'm just saying, but this is, you know, that's, that was my, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. You can think about it, but it's. So how do you measure a driveway? And if you talk to an engineer, they'll say, they'll talk, they'll say what I'm saying, they'll support mine. An engineer or a surveyor. Tom is not an engineer nor is he a surveyor, so he does not measure that way.
He's just going from edge of the drive.
No, he goes from the, yeah, from the driveway.
From the edge of the concrete.
Yeah. Which is, yeah, it's five feet, but it's because the slope was, comes out five feet.
So in this case, is the issue, is the issue that it's trapped the water or is the issue that the slope goes to the edge of the property?
The issue was the water, basically.
Gotcha.
But if there's no, you know, there's nothing saying he has to, they have to build any drainage pipe. So it has been resolved, but I'm just saying that we have nothing in our definitions on how to measure for the driveway. That's all.
Put it on the list.
Put it on the list.
I think that this will take a fair amount of discussion.
Put it on the list.
But thank you.
Okay.
So I, we do have one other item that we have to discuss, and that's actually the map amendment that is associated with everything that we're doing. And so the proposal is the area that's currently outlined in the magenta color, which is the B two Town Center area, would be rezoned to the B three Historic Town Center District. And then the B one district, and I don't know what color that is, light blue, sea blue maybe? Teal, a little bit teal. The B one district that's located at the corner of Bellis Road and Hinkley Hills Road would be amended to an R one Residential District. That's consistent with what we discussed. Perfect. And then the final thing, and I won't share the screen on this, but I did send to the full zoning commission a full separate word document of proposed grammatical issues. I do think that those are entirely grammatical in nature, we're just matching language throughout the book. So did anyone have any questions or concerns with respect to that? If there's nothing else with respect to the proposed amendments, I would entertain a motion to amend the text of the zoning regulation, zoning resolution and district map and forward the proposed amendments to the Medina County Planning Commission for consideration.
So moved.
Moved by. Do we have to read all of the changes now?
Do bring your lunch.
I just read every single one as we were working through it.
And he read his motion too.
And Suzanne asked me, because Suzanne's off tomorrow and Monday is when I have to do the submission by, but which is later maybe because we have five days, so I'm doing it myself. And Suzanne asked, how are you submitting these? Are you submitting, are you printing all these individual pages and submitting just a bunch of track changes? And I said, no, I'm going to submit the entire proposal straight through and underlining. And then if planning services request something different, I'll provide what they want. But yes, this is a lot of work. So I have a motion by Crew. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Spellman, we will do a roll on this. So Fisher, yeah, any further discussion before we do the roll? Perfect. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
The motion is approved. We also need to set a motion, we also need to make a motion to set a public hearing on the proposed amendments for October sixth at six thirty P M. We should be able to actually have our meaningful public hearing at that meeting because the Planning Commission will meet the submission deadline for the October fifth Planning Commission meeting. So if every, if the stars align correctly, we should have their response by our October sixth meeting. So we might actually be able to move forward with this on October sixth. We can always continue the public hearing, depending upon how extensive the commentary is, particularly given that we're doing map amendments as well. But there is potentially we'll be able to substantively move forward with this on October sixth. So I will entertain a motion to set up, set a public hearing on the proposed amendments for October sixth at six thirty P M. So moved. Moved by Manly.
So.
Seconded by Marzullo. I will do, any further discussion? I will do a roll on this one. Fisher, yes. Crew?
Yes.
Marzullo?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yep.
Yes. The motion has been approved. I think that that takes care of the agenda items.
Just one question, will the, because I, I forget who it was, maybe Nikki Long, who asked the question about the residents in the area, will they be notified of the public hearing?
Yeah, now because the rezoning will affect more than ten parcels, the statute's a little different in that we have to post it and do certain things. It doesn't have to be individual mailers, but I am going to suggest that we do individual mailers on it just because, particularly with respect to the Bellis Road, Hinkley Hills, I want to make sure that they are informed of it.
Okay.
Personally.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Chairman's report, the next regular zoning commission will be October sixth, twenty twenty-two, which will follow, immediately follow the public hearing for that same date. Consultant for Design Standards, so trustee Augustine has been working very hard on this with us in the, the planning and the zoning department. And so we've reached out to, her name is Katrina, correct? Katrina, and she is an attorney who works closely with Montville on, on zoning projects, but she also works with other townships as well, and she has a governmental rate. She used to work in the county prosecutor's office as well. And so we were kind of looking at whether this is still something that we want to pursue. And then if so, what level of consultant that we would like to start identifying costs for. And so really, we've broken it down into two possible options. The first option would be, we craft the language and then we have it reviewed by a design consultant or the design consultant works with us, does the initial drafting of the language, and then we further refine that with the design call consultant. So it's just a question of how actively involved do we want a design consultant to be? And so we're not making any motions yet. I just want to understand, engage from this commission, what the commission feels would be an appropriate level of involvement for a consultant on design standards. And this is again predominantly for the B three district right now that we're looking at.
I think we need to, I think they need to sit down with us and, and, I don't know, I'd almost think we need to at least give an outline of what we would like or looking for rather than them just coming up with it. It's been my experience.
Either way, we'll be doing that. The question would be, do we essentially write a chapter and do it without their involvement and then send it to them? And then they do the review process and provide feedback? Or do, do they work more hand in hand with us as we start to draft the language? We tell them what we would like to see, we have our hearings, they come through, they start to draft the language, we review it, tell them yes, no, right direction, wrong direction, they go back and, and review it. And trustee Augustine, if I'm mischaracterizing anything, please.
Oh, that's perfect. And we, we, I, you know, we kind of talked, Marcus and I kind of talked, do we want a consultant or do we want counsel? And Katrina is counsel, we felt that that might be a stronger way to move forward. Obviously, we'll save funds if you craft the language and then she comes in and she reviews it. But whatever the commission would like to move forward, whatever direction you choose, I will ask trustees if they'll support it.
Right, good. We, we live here, obviously, and we've been around. I think it's better off if we start the process and start writing it and then, you know, let them begin to tweak it and bring it back for our review. I think we, whatever issue we're trying to address, I think we would understand it better than a third party who's kind of new to the table.
I think that's fine. Did that help us? Perfect. And, and, you know, again, we have this whole current text amendment that we're going to work through. And so we're just starting the process to look into that. It will be, I'm sure, a year-long venture to explore, but it's just something that I think we want to start understanding what the costs will look like, what the options are and, and what, you know, different people that could be involved in the process. And the last thing that I have is that Denise, there, there was a training session that the planning services, Denise Testa held, that occurred at the same time as our special meeting on Tuesday. So obviously, we wouldn't have been able to attend, so I didn't forward it to you. But she has offered to have the same training for us on September twenty-first. So it would be for this planning commission, the board of zoning appeals, the zoning department one to be on. And then I think we're also going to try to allow it to be recorded so that we can share with other townships that, like us, weren't able to attend the meeting on Tuesday. And so that's just a training opportunity. If you'd like to attend, it would be great. If you're able to attend, it's again Tuesday, or September twenty-first at six thirty P M.
There's a virtual option, so if you can't be here in person, certainly you can listen in. But that would count as your second education if you guys would have that your criteria.
And the, the very last thing I have is I would be remiss not to thank trustee Augustine and Susan, Suzanne Peterland and Tom Wilson and the zoning fire inspector, Gabe, I forget.
Gabe Yerbasie.
Gabe Yerbasie. All of us have sat down, we've gone through this, some of the amendments that you saw that went through tonight were as a result of that discussion process. So we've really been working collaboratively to try to identify it. And if any of you want to be more involved in that process, never hesitate to ask now because it's, I think it's been a good process so far. But as I said, the zoning department still has additional amendments that they would like to make as well. I've certainly got them. I would like to see us look at the front yard setback for conservation developments is one of my highest priorities after this. I know that Mr. Marzullo has mentioned the automobile service station and nuisances that he would like to explore. I think that those are very valuable topics. We have the alternative energy that Mr. Pearl has mentioned before. We now have the driveways also to look at, so we've got plenty of topics moving forward as we continue this process. But I think that this is a good, good next amendment to our book and then we can look at what to do next. I have nothing else, so Ms. Crew, anything?
I, I, one thing, early, very early when we were talking about the nuisances, maybe I wasn't listening intently, you said that there is a form they complete, but there's no way of filing it, so there's no way of grabbing it. So where is it kept?
So it's just kept in generic folders, so it's just in like catch-all folders, almost like your junk drawer. So it's not like she can just hand you a folder and say, here are all the complaints because that will have many other documents in it that aren't relevant to nuisance complaints. So that's what we're going to subdivide that into a folder just for these complaints.
Okay, that's the question. And with regard to nuisances, how, I don't know if our definitions are tight enough, are they?
And that's, I think.
For, I mean, we don't put a noise decibel, so we can't say that they're noisy.
Correct.
And so how is it defined a nuisance? I mean.
It's a nuisance complaint. It doesn't mean it's an actionable complaint.
Okay.
So it's a complaint that's come in, it's been recorded, and then it's been determined to not be a violation of the zoning regulations because it's not actionable, given our current regulations.
And even, even if we have the, a decibel level, we need the, the equipment to register the training. And then on top of that, I mean, what can we do besides saying, hey, you're over it, you got to shut it down? And the reality is, we don't find out until a few days later anyways. And it's no longer a complaint because it's done.
Always it's very difficult because it's so transitory and temporary.
Right, right. Okay. That, that just bothered me. I have to chew on that a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Marzullo?
Uh, yeah, so I, I sent everyone that, the email that came in the other day.
From Mr. Larson?
Correct. And I want to make sure that everyone got it and, uh, let's see if I've got it still.
Do I assume that was in Hinkley?
Yes, yeah, so.
There was no address or anything.
That's the same home on Mattingly.
Oh, that we heard the address on?
Um, and, and ultimately what Mr. Larson says, he sent a picture of a bachelorette party at, at an Airbnb on Mattingly. And he said, this party took place the Friday after your last meeting, complaints were made. They're clearly running a short-term business use far outside of normal rental. If this house were next to any member of the commission, there'd be a lot greater sense of urgency than all of you have shown to manage this nuisance. It will only grow as those who have property suitable for this use see your inaction and take advantage of it. There's simply too much money to be made.
And I, I did follow up with the zoning department on this because I know you said complaints were made. And so I was curious, again, because of our discussion on complaints, where was that made? The zoning department, neither zoning inspector Wilson nor Suzanne Peterland have received.
Do you know if the police department?
So I don't know what happened. I thought, I was hoping that Mr. Larson would be here today to talk about it.
But I was going to call over there today and I didn't, I forgot. But I, I would be interested to know if there were complaints and if there were the complaints, why was it the same person who complained the last time? I, I don't know. And I don't, to be honest, when I saw the sign that said bachelor party on it, do you know how many grad party signs you've wrote by in the last three months?
You live right next to the park. How many bachelor parties, grad parties, birthday parties are you seeing? And it's, it's a park environment, but yet they're very close to your home and you're hearing them and seeing them and.
So that's all. I just, when I saw that sign, I'm like, oh, come on. I could count, I think probably a hundred signs I've seen. And cars and noise and, but I don't know. I, I wasn't there. I don't, you know, I don't know.
And that's the question, what is the complaint? Is the complaint a noise complaint? Is it a traffic complaint? What's the complaint?
Is it a lighting complaint?
Right.
Those are the things because that's where.
A lot of times, these are things.
And I, I think, looking at it, I, I would be very curious to hear their input as to how often it's happening. Because frankly, I have, I have people over my house, I have, I have a big family and they're over.
A lot.
Is that any different than having a, a bachelorette party?
Right.
I mean, God, those kids are loud. There's a lot of them.
Do your neighbors like them?
I, I don't know. But ultimately, I think the, the ultimate question is, do, do I care? And I, I, I say that not, not half-heartedly, I, I mean that because ultimately, you have a right to have people in your home. And if people are loud and it's just normal conversation, it's too loud for you, I mean, I do get it. Why do most people move out to a township? And I think most people move out to a township for space and freedom to do what they want.
Your government regulations.
Yeah. Which actually segues into something else, but that's for the next meeting.
I think you have. I think you have parties at your house even with the ten or eleven kids that you have by now, right?
More or less.
You don't even need to have your extended family over.
Wait, wait, what's this teaser? You can't just.
I know, I know.
It, it's, it, it ends up being a long conversation. We'll get into it next time.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to continue or extend this meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're going to get out early.
Mr. Manly?
Unless you're interested in this, Mr. Pearl had mentioned, asked, is our last meeting, not last meeting, but some point about the conditional that was issued to the Buzzards Cove. And to the best of my knowledge, they came back and I was on the B Z A. Back, per your information, I was on the first site plan committee we ever did here. I was on the B Z A about two months when they said you're on this new site committee. But anyhow, they, they did not appear to us in nineteen eighty-eight, or I don't know where that came from. But, and there's no record here at all. The best I can remember is ninety-one or ninety-two, they, they approached, first of all, they went and the previous owners decided they were going to open the ice cream shop again and expand it and the driving range, as I recall. And went back and forth and eventually they did come to the B Z A, but at the last moment they withdrew it on bicep council. And I can't tell you when or where because I only tracked the actual hearings we had while I was there. The best of my knowledge, no conditionals were ever, ever placed on that property.
It, it's interesting that you mention that because independent, I didn't know that any of that had transpired. I actually reached out to Suzanne today and asked because I was curious whether Buzzards Cove is a legal non-conforming or a conditional. And she seemed to indicate that the zoning office treats the outdoor recreation as actually a legal non-conforming use, not a conditional because of the existence of it.
That may have been, I don't recall precisely why it was withdrawn, but it was withdrawn.
And the restaurant, which is relatively new, would be a permitted use because B one allows restaurants as a permitted use. So there would have been no conditional use for the restaurant portion. Mr. Spelman?
I have nothing.
Perfect. Just the Augustine.
Thank you for all your work. Appreciate all.
Miss Golden?
Let's go home.
Nothing. Any public comments? Nothing. I will entertain a motion to.
Anyone in that?
They can't because. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-three P M.
So moved.
Moved by Spelman. That was the fastest motion. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Crew, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? None? Motion passes.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Pearl. We needed an audience.
And Mr. Pearl gave me a ton of revision.